Fifth, 2024, here in Town Hall. As we begin to convene our session, please be reminded that these proceedings are being televised and recorded by Sandwich Community Television. May we rise for the pleasure of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is anyone here for public comment? Okay, use the mic right over there. Make sure the green light is on, please. State your name and address, and you'll have five minutes to make a presentation.
I'd like to introduce myself. I'm Jane Wilkin. I live at 35 South Point Drive, which is part of South Point Condominiums. We're off of Farmersville Road. I'm currently the chairperson of the board, and I'm here representing the 64-unit owners at South Point. We are not an over 55 community, but we're pretty close to that, and we have about 60 year-round residents, some snowbirds, some people that use a unit seasonally. We've been concerned for quite some time about speed on Farmersville Road. We don't use a lot of town services. We do our own snow plowing and landscaping. We're very happy when, well, not happy, but we're very appreciative when EMTs and the Fire Department or the Police Department come when we call them. And we're also appreciative of the work that was done by the Public Works Department three, four years ago to fix Farmersville Road, to make it smooth and a very easy drive. The problem is, is that people do not understand or choose not to understand that it's a 30 mile per hour limit. There is only one speed limit sign on the length of Farmersville Road, and that's right when you turn in from Ketchum Road. There are no signs coming from Barnstable, from Race Lane. And the road is, doesn't have a lot of commercial businesses, and so it's a very easy road to drive. Unfortunately, as you get to our condominium complex drive-in, the road dips and the road curves. So getting out of the exit is challenging at best, and when people are speeding, it makes it more challenging. So I'm here to ask you tonight to direct the Public Works Department, or I'm happy and Andy Heckler, who is with me as our treasurer, are happy to meet with the Public Works Department. But our recommendation would be that there certainly should be a speed limit sign as you come into Sandwich from Barnstable. And we would like, in order to ensure the safety for us and people on Farmersville Road, to have another sign where the John Uwe Road comes, which is very close to where you see our blind drive sign, but doesn't really allow you a chance to slow down. And then also after the Boardley Road cutoff, which you know a lot of people use from Falmouth and Mashpee and Route 28. We're hopeful that you will take this request under consideration, and I just want to express my appreciation for you for the time that you're giving us this evening and the time that you put in as volunteers to the community. I gave you a map, which is on the second page, and it shows where South Point is relative to Farmersville Road. It's marked in green, which is where South Point is, and the three additional sign locations are marked in pink. So that's what we'd like to have happen, and we understand that you have many requests, so we hope that you'll take this into consideration.
Andy, anything you want to add?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilkin. Anybody else for public comment?
Hi, my name is Meredith Stier. My fiance and I, Tyler Clark, we purchased 179 Main Street, and I just came here, we have had been working with the Historic District Committee to get some approvals for our project at 179 Main, and it's been an interesting process. Last week, we had had our second discussion with the Historic District Committee, and one of the issues, or one of the things I wanted to talk to you about was just communication. I, the, two of the gentlemen on the committee had just asked a question to me, because I had a, I felt constructive criticism about just communication and what was expected of a second site visit with the preservationist to our home. And I was met with a lot of, it felt like contempt. I was asked what prejudice I felt. I just said, I think that when somebody's coming to your home, expectations of potential things that could happen is expected, just say, you know, you may be asked to have somebody come into the home, this will just be outside of the home. And when that was discussed, it was very much shut down, dismissed. And then the discussion on our project was about 40 minutes of people just arguing and demeaning our process, demeaning the experience and what was expected, and it seemed as though there wasn't a lot of care for the feelings for myself and my fiance. It's our home. We have, we really love Sandwich. We live here right now, and we have another home that we, home that we bought, and we were really excited to, what we thought, or what we think is to improve, preserve, and do the best that we can for the town, for our family, and for this home, and to be told that we were in disregard of preserving something that are just, it was not a very pleasant experience, and in short, I just, I think that there can be a lot of communication improvements, because this was, this is not something that I would want anybody else to go through. And I really want to see these homes be able to be restored, preserved for a long time to come, and I wouldn't expect anyone to go through what we have gone through or want to go through that. So I just, I know that some of you probably saw these, because we were watching some televised past meetings, so I don't know if you are aware, but it was a pretty tough situation. I would hope that you guys could discuss this and maybe help create some ideas to make communication a little bit better. So that was all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Can you push the green button, the green button on the? There we go. Anyways, I've been going in front of Sandwich Historic for 40 years now, and I've seen it all.
Name and address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Anne McNevits, 2 Ha Stone Way, East Sandwich.
Thank you.
So this particular project is so that the owner's parents can move in, and we're doing an addition to one side. We were removing a wing that was basically a shed that was 15 by 13 and then a section 17 by 13 that really would improve the property by removing it and adding this addition, and it will make the family work. I have never seen members act the way they acted. The last two hearings and the last two on sites, they were very intimidating to my client, they were rude, they didn't care, they said suck it up, and if they don't like what the end result was, they could sell their house. That's not how Sandwich should be represented, and I'm appalled at how two members acted, and they're totally out of control. And I would encourage you to watch the tape, and I think something has to be done about it, because that is not how we want people to view the process in Sandwich. It shouldn't be like that. Like I said, I've been doing it for 40 years, and it's always got something going on, but this was atrocious, and you shouldn't be intimidating homeowners. All right, thank you.
Thank you for sharing your perspectives and concerns. Anybody else for public comment? Moving on to review and approval of minutes for November 26, 2024.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of 11:26:24.
Motion to approve by Mr. George, second by Mr. Ellis. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to abstain, I wasn't here, present at the meeting.
301. Thank you. Town manager report.
A few quick updates in terms of upcoming meetings. Our next meeting is on December 19, and I know we had talked about probably holding that at 3 o'clock in the afternoon in light of the season. We should talk about that more under Old Business, just to make sure that works for everyone. Tonight, we were going to have our tax rate classification workshop with Ben Steich, the Director of Assessing, and this is a full revaluation year, so the prior state law was that you do a full revale every three years, and it's, now it's every five. So when, in your full revale year, they scrutinize everything closer. They've been really helpful for the last several months. We've had our data in for quite some time, and the state, each person has to oversee many communities in the Commonwealth, not just even a dozen. So the person who's reviewing Sandwich said everything looks good, but they need to spend the time. So that should be ready, or will be ready, for our meeting on the 19th. We were going to do it again tonight. There's a couple requirements. So as soon as the state signs off on the values, if anyone's interested in their own property, we will publicize those on, and publish them on our website at www.sandwichmass.org under the Assessing. We'll probably have a link right on the front page. We're going to post those for at least five days before we hold the tax classification workshop. So, and there should still be plenty of time to print the bills and get them out on time, so just wanted to assure the board that. A couple of other quick updates. I know probably three, four meetings ago, Chief Burke was in to talk about some work and cooperation from the town of Born to help us on sort of an intermunicipal agreement, which is a higher level than a mutual aid agreement for Phillips Road, and the reason it was important is insurance companies were starting to charge residents on that road exorbitant increases, because the closest Sandwich Fire Station is on the other side of the bridge, and yet for, you know, many, many decades, we've had agreements with Born where we cover North Sagamore for them, they cover Phillips Road for us, and we both respond to our respective areas. It's just the other town usually gets there first. So I can't tell you how cooperative the Born Fire Chief and Town Manager's office were and their select boards. So we got that resolved very quickly, and they're charging us the whopping sum of $100 a year to do that, but that was a workaround, and we're going to save the people on their insurance a significant amount of money over there. So that was great. And then two quick based updates that I thought you'd be interested in. I think when the commanders were in, again, about two months ago, they updated us that they were considering other uses for some of their surplus property, including housing purposes. And so Mass Development, which is a branch of state government, was going to do an expedited study to look at a couple of specific areas that they had identified. Mass Development let us know this week that it made more sense, the more they looked into things, and as the board knows how complex the layer cake of different leases and ownership and who controls what property out there, it's really complex. And so they thought a slower approach would make more sense, so they're actually going to issue an RFP for a consultant to help them next week, and it would probably change a year-long process into a couple-year process. But I think it's all being done for, you know, the best intentions and for the right reasons, so just want to let you know that. And then lastly, I mean, you know how hard we've been working on the wastewater efforts, especially with Joint Base Cape Cod and Converge that runs and owns the water and wastewater system out there. So the base is going to host the five towns next week, just for a quick meeting to try to get everyone on the same page, because a key component of the future is where we could dispose of treated effluent on the base. The current rapid infiltration basins that you can see along the canal on Route 6A as you head towards the Gallo Rink on the opposite side of the road have high levels of PFOS, so we're going to have to look at a new treatment system, and they're trying to get permission from the Army Corps of Engineers to grant a certain amount of acreage, so it would basically take care of the base capacity, plus any of the surrounding towns if we needed to work together, which is obviously what we're all trying to do. And I think it's fair to say that, like, Sandwich is probably the first one knocking on the door there. Other towns have needs, they might be at different times, but at least would give options down the road. So they're going to have a meeting to that effect to try to organize how we can best make a presentation to the Army Corps and to the different federal and state regulators. So, and sort of tied into that are our continued efforts on our special act. All of a sudden, we're starting to get quite a few questions from the state and the federal offices, so we're going to work with town council to try to get answers on that, but it's clear it's going to take a while, so we're still trying. And that's it.
Thank you. I love the layer cake phrase. Anybody?
I just have one. For the people on Phillips Road, is that something that we notify them of the change that we're doing?
Don't know if we, because it really is not changing anything for them. It's just now they, we'll have a response if the insurance company does jack the rates up quite a bit, and I know people are, people told me that everyone's seeing it on their homeowner insurance is going up a little bit, but it was, it was a lot, like, it was like almost half, I think, yeah.
Yeah, mutual aid was always fine. It became the ISO issue was the problem.
But I can check with Chief Burke if there's a way we can get word out out there.
Mr. George? I got a couple of things. Seeing the open forum tonight with the HDC, this is not the first time that we've had issues with people complaining about their attitudes. I'm just wondering if this board ought to send the HDC a letter in regards to their mannerism and the way they're conducting their meetings. I think it's something we need to address, and I say again, it's not the first time. So what do you gentlemen feel like? We should be doing something about it or just overlook it?
Overlook it's probably not an appropriate consideration.
Well, I'm being right blunt. I speak my mind, but I think we need to address the issue of what's going on over there.
Right, we have to.
How do we go about it?
Investigate the purview of what our interest should be.
Yep. Because some of them are elected and some are appointed, so I think that we, I think how we addressed it in the past was, I think, chair-to-chair communication, you know, something along those lines. I mean, that's how, you know, a couple of years ago, we did it to address it, and then you kind of take it from there.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. George.
Okay, I've got one more.
Yes, sir.
On the new beach nourishment, I went down, took a look, I walked a lot of it, and to my dislikes, it's already starting to erode. There's a wall forming there. Is there anything we can do between the town, the butters, and the Conservation Commission to try to save it? It's been two weeks, three weeks, and it's already starting to erode. I just, I shook my head, and I'm going like, wow, here we are again already. Is there anything we can do? Are the butters willing to put more than they've had before up there to hold it, and the conservation go along with it, or we somehow try to prevent it from just disappearing again?
I know, I'm trying to think of the right way to say it. Like, the template that we had approved 12 years ago through the regulatory agencies was much, much more gradual slope, not only into the water, but then under the, you know, under the surface, going out quite a ways. So the goal was to have waves break further from shore so they're not pounding into the dunes, and I think a combination because the, it was, it was the Core permit, so they used our template a little bit, but because of the regulatory agencies, they wouldn't let them go over certain areas where, which we had permitted a long time ago, and so they had to build it seaper. And I know when our coastal engineering company, Woods Hole Group, went out after, you know, we altered it, that was their first comment, geez, it would be great if it was a little bit more gradual. It's wonderful we got the material, but it would probably function better if it was sloped a little more gradually. And so I know that's something that we want to explore with the Core. They're still waiting on the final survey plans, so from Great Lakes, once they place the sand, they're supposed to get a survey to the Core, and then the Core was going to organize a meeting with us just to talk it over. And I know one of the things we want to talk about just on the town beach area is planting beach grass where we can, you know, at the top of the dune, and then they usually let us go down about a third of the way. So those are a couple of things that we were looking at, but it is sobering in a couple of those areas, seeing how much it's scarped our edge.
Yeah, already. We don't, I don't think we've got much time. In Florida, I've had pictures sent up to me from people down there that, these pyramids are cement, and they're probably four feet, four or five feet high, and they've got holes through them, and the waves hit that, and the water goes right through them, in and out of them, and that breaks the wave action. That's something we could look at, not very expensive, I don't think.
I know that the state doesn't allow hardened structures on beaches. I think that's the difference between Massachusetts, and that's like a, it's just they don't allow it. So I'm not sure what.
Can we ask? I mean, if they, you know, if they come down and look and see what's going on, somebody's going to be able to turn ahead and say, wow, we just gave you all this sand, and now all of a sudden, you're losing it within a month. Is it worth the asking and having them come down and then just see what we're going through?
I can check.
You know, it's a shame.
Yes, Mr. Ellis.
Well, one thing you have to understand about it is it's, it's a dynamic shore environment. It's never going to be static. And the sand is not lost. It couldn't get blinked up like I Dream of Jeannie. It's in the system. So sand, even during the project, sand was escaping from the project and landing right on Spring Hill Beach. So the whole idea, the only thing I would say is, you know, when's the next project? Because that's what's really needed, is for that to be a perpetual project, where we're constantly reintroducing sand into that dynamic system. So people should expect that there would be some loss, and that's, that's private. On the other hand, you know, the disturbances like that are what piping plovers like the best. So we go from a, you know, an upside to a downside, so it's Mother Nature, and we're going to ride it.
Yep, I've got to win.
I would say one of our big requirements is we have to do scientific studies of the borrow site, because again, that was our permit they used, not theirs, and we have to show how quickly it fills back in and make sure that it fills in with similar material, which I think all the experts think that's not going to be a problem. It will fill in well, and it'll fill in with the right stuff, but we have to study that, and that, that would be really worth spending money on, because that's the only way, if we proved it worked once, we'll be able to get that permit again, and maybe we can expand the size a little bit. And, I mean, if you think about the cost for the volume of sand that was brought over with that heavy equipment, it was a pretty decent price, really. I mean, we couldn't have bought it from land-based sources for that.
Do we have any thing more in Old Harbor?
Yeah, we're still trying to permit that. That's one thing that we're trying to work with Coastal Zone Management on. We still get the same pushback, and I don't mean to be a broken record, but we were told from day one that would far and away be the most difficult permit that we could ask for, but we're still trying. It's frustrating, because that would be a perfect job for the county dredge, which, again, it's not a huge amount of material, but I bet you we could get 100,000 cubic yards or 75,000 cubic yards and.
With as much sand as we have out there right now, we may be looking for the barge to keep the inlet open.
Yeah.
That's what happens at Sessuwa, when you, when you take your way down the Cape on the inside, that's what typically happens. Dark Harbor needs to be dug out just to get in. Never mind getting into the harbor and getting the sand. That, to me, is ridiculous to even pursue. But inlet itself is what will give you, with that much sand, it may shoal up, it may be hard to get in and out.
Well, yes, specific to that one, and in reference to your earlier point, as the sand goes out into the harbor, that helps us too, but it just has to be, as in other states, it gets replenished on a more regular basis. And I like to think we can work towards that.
I mean, when the same company that was with us that was doing an $8 million project was leaving us to do a $75 million project in Long Island, and then after that, they were going to do like a $350 million project in New Jersey. So we were a little speck on, on their work order. Yeah.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm good.
Okay. Correspondence, statements, and announcements. Believe it or not, I have none this week. Staff meeting, tri-board meeting, fiscal year '25 and fiscal year '26 budgets, large-scale school and town capital projects.
Yes, I don't know if you want me to just sort of rant for a bit? There's a signing, signup sheet that we should all sign, because when Sue James does the minutes, she sees the backs of our heads, so she, okay, so she asked us to do that. So, so I think in front of everyone is the same exact information that's in the larger packets, and on the front, there's a list of all the documents, and then there's red numbers on each page. And don't worry, I wasn't planning on going through each of these, but just for a quick overview.
You know, excuse me, that's a good idea, Patrick.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Let's do a introduction around the table, starting with Matt Anderson.
I'm Matt Anderson. I'm finance. I'm the Chair of Finance.
I'm the Finance Director of Schools.
I'm the Chief of School Committee. I'm the Chief of the School Committee. Sue Noah, Chairman of School Committee.
Joe Maruszek, Superintendent of Schools.
Kevin Skorall, Vice Chair of School Committee.
Michelle Austin, Director of Finance for the Schools.
Heather Harper, Assistant Town Manager.
Bud Dunham, Town Manager.
Charlie Holden, Select Board Chair.
Bobby George, Vice Chairman, Select Board.
Shane Hacter, Select Board.
Patrick Ellis, Select Board.
And it might be helpful as well if, especially you folks are making a comment, to identify yourselves as you're making the comment. How about that?
And then Finance Director Bill Jennings is joining us remotely, and Bill, just so everyone knows, the way Bill's hearing this, it's very garbled, so if we have questions for him, we'll relay it into the mic, and I guess he can hear us a little bit better, and then he'll answer. But I just wanted to go through a quick overview on what's in the packet. This is the traditional time that we all meet to talk about the upcoming fiscal year's budget, and I think it's fair to say at the discussions, at least with the Finance Committee and Select Board, as much as we want to focus on the upcoming fiscal year's budget, there's some bigger issues that I think we all agree it would, might be worth spending more time on, maybe talking about and working on, because my guess is the operating budget stuff will pretty much go through the process that we always have. You know, I know we're going to come in, try to do level service, or if there's some small increases in expenses, and I know there'll be an effort as well, that if we're, you know, above what we need to be, we make cuts to get there. So some of that's fairly straightforward, but if you look in the packet, the first, second page, but it's numbered number one, is just the budget cycle that's required under the town charter and the review process. So, you know, really, the important things are in late January, I present the overall budget and the general government budget to the Select Board, and in early February, the Finance Committee, School Committee is working on the same type of things. They present it to the Finance Committee and Select Board right around the same time. We usually review it for a couple of months, and typically by early, by late March or early April, we need to finalize the budget for town meeting. The second, page number two, is a summary of what the final FY '25 budget was, so that's the fiscal year that we're in right now. the fiscal year that we're in right now. So this would include the actual numbers that the state finalized in their budget in August. And it shows, you know, the final amounts for Chapter 70 aid, discretionary aid, our assessments for tuitions, and our other assessments that we have to pay. The two numbers that are in yellow on the bottom right, as I know the School Committee's aware of, the, we did get extra Chapter 70 money than what we had planned and voted in May. And so there was a commitment to add that additional amount, which was roughly $165,000 to the School Department budget. So I want to stress that the number in yellow reflects that additional amount. If we were able to hold town meeting a couple of weeks ago, and it was approved, that's what it would be. And we do plan to hold town meeting the second week in January. So if that gets approved, that's what that number would be. Without going into much detail, and I know Bill's prepared to go through each line if people want to, one of the reasons we didn't do an estimate for '26 yet is literally more than two-thirds of the items on the right-hand side under expenses are out of our control. Like, we get told what they are by other parties, and we haven't heard from a single one of them yet. And we won't know probably till February. And so as soon as we get better information, we'll distribute it, start filling it in. I think this, this one-page summary, it's not the end-all, be-all, but it's probably the easiest way to explain the overall general government budget. And literally every single meeting, the Select Board and Finance Committee talk about it. So as we get better numbers, we'll be sure to fill those in and keep everyone updated. I would say a couple of trends to look out for. It's interesting that our tuition assessments have either been about the same or gone down a tad, which is great, because that would be public, other public schools, including charter schools. And I would say the part that hasn't been great is generally, we've been doing pretty well with health insurance versus most other communities. But we've just heard, sort of in the whole Northeast region, and really across the country, costs are way up. I think a lot of employers are hearing right now that, you know, those expenses are going up significantly. There were many years when we had double-digit increases, and we've avoided that for probably six or seven. And we might be looking at that from what we've been hearing, but again, we don't have any hard data on that yet. And then county retirement has also gone up quite a bit the last few years, and it's something we scratch our heads about a little bit, because the investment income has been pretty good in those places, too. So we're anxious to see what, how those numbers come in, and again, we'll know more in a few months. What's sobering is, when you look at as big a number as $13 million for health insurance, if that's a 10% increase, that's $1.3 million. If you look on the left of what it looks like our 2.5% is, which, you know, you always hear Proposition 2.5, you know, two-thirds of Proposition 2.5 is getting taken up by health insurance increases. So that's something that Bill, Heather, and I talk about a lot. And again, we've done okay the last several years, and we hope this is a one-year blip. But if that's a trend, you know, that's something we're all going to have to talk about, because that would really start impacting everybody. So I wasn't going to spend as much time on the annual budget unless people had questions. I know in discussions with Dr. Maruszek, and Michelle Austin, and Chris George, that sort of those large-scale capital projects are starting to dominate a lot of our attention. And we did have that recent debt exclusion to help address some of the identified needs. I think this is really round numbers, you know, about, a little more than half of the work's been done. And I know some of the bids that we've gotten back on, some of the other remaining work has come in higher than we thought. That's a trend that we're hearing everywhere, not just, you know, here or those particular projects. So it's fair to say, at least from what I've heard at Finance Committee meetings, and with my discussions with school colleagues, and with the Select Board, it made sense to focus on some large school capital issues. And so there was a group of us, first internally with staff, between the two sides of government, we met a couple of times to talk about it. And then we expanded a little bit by having a representative from the School Committee, and the Finance Committee, the CIPC, and the Select Board come. And page number three is the agenda for the meeting that we had in early September, just to talk about some of these items, and to give updates on some other projects that we're trying to help everyone with, including, you know, some pretty big successes on the three school wastewater treatment plants, which we can save that for another day. And so one of the things that came out of it is that many years ago, we had, we hired a firm to come in from the outside, who are an expert cost estimating firm, and they literally looked at every school and town building, gave us a really thick report, and if I recall, it showed that we needed to do 25 million in repairs. We used it as proof that some buildings on the town side just weren't useful anymore, needed to be replaced. We used it to get a very small debt exclusion in the end, for, I think, less than 20% of what that report recommended. And so we didn't, you know, come anywhere near to addressing all those needs, but at least we had a report to go by. I know when both the school and the town got grants from our insurer to institute a program called Facilities D, they did a comprehensive report for the schools, they did a comprehensive report for the town, so we did that study as well. So it's fair to say we've done these, but we really think the time is right to have, hire a group to come in and look at these buildings again, and try to come up with a total list on, on what we need to do. I would say the big difference on the town side, as many people know, is we've chipped away at some of those long-term building needs. So it's not like we're looking at building new buildings, with the exception of DPW and the downtown fire station. It's more, it would more be a report for, you know, now that you've done this work at 100 Route 6A, what things do we need to do over the next 15 or 20 years to keep the building up, or to make it more energy efficient, all that. I think the biggest focus of the, of the study, without a doubt, would be, you know, what are the three schools? It would make sense to do the new school administration building, too, for the same reason we do 106A, or the, the new public safety buildings, just to help us. So number four in the packet is just an email that I sent to the group that met the first time, and it shows you just some, in yellow, you know, what I had heard from some other towns. So there, there are firms out there that do this sort of work. We tried to get input on what it might cost, but it was sort of unfair, because it's not like we had a scope of work for someone to give us that price. I think that price that's listed in there is really low, because, you know, there's a lot of square footage that we would want to look at. We did find out from Town Council that technically, if you hire an architect or a cost estimating firm, it does not have to be publicly bid. But it would really, I think it would make sense if we did a, you know, a pretty refined scope of work, got it to some firms, and got some quotes back, just to see what it would cost. And then we could talk to the Finance Committee about how do we try to fund that. It's not something that would happen overnight, but my guess is, like, the results of that could lead to bigger-picture discussions, I would think, for a year or two, to help inform, you know, how we move forward. And I'm stealing a line from Dr. Maruszek, but, you know, we want to do everything we can to avoid a $250 million school MSBA project. And, you know, I think our guts tell us, if we do things the right way, there's probably a much cheaper way to do it without going through that process. Just to highlight a few other things in the packet, I think page number five is an update on that school debt exclusion, and where the funds are at today versus when they were appropriated. Page six, I think, is pretty interesting, and it's too small for anyone to read. But if you look at the four years in yellow, and add up just the school requests for those three, four years, it's over $6.3 million. There's no way in our normal, you know, capital budget, and we all know that, that there's no way we can afford to do that without some bigger effort. Again, which I think points more towards a larger study. So page seven, Heather drafted, and we had our project manager, who the school's working with now, and who we've worked with previously, tried to wordsmith it a little bit, but it's their summary of what a scope of work could look at, look like, on things to look at in each of the buildings. And it focuses on the larger systems that we, I think we would all think about at the top of our head. One thing that I think we should talk about at some point, if we want to include or not, is like an energy analysis. Our gut tells us, if we ask for that, it's going to be quite a bit more expensive. At some point, we probably need to do that, and there might be ways to take advantage of either grants or other things that could save us money over time. Interestingly, on page seven, if you look at the bottom, those are those reports that I talked about. You know, all of that had been done since 2010, but, you know, there's still, I don't think any of us feel like we have a handle on what we really need to do at all those buildings. I won't go through these. On page eight, that's just the list of all of the buildings that we insure. So tried to take a quick look, and highlighted in yellow. I took a stab first, then I met with our facilities director, and then Chris and I had a chance to talk. There's some smaller buildings we shouldn't look at, but if you look at page nine, it's a lot easier to read, and it sort of gets rid of some of the columns. But my guess is, if we did a scope of work, that would probably be the buildings we'd want to have looked at. If you look at the square footages on the right, since I printed these, the, Ben Steich, our Director of Assessing, has filled in all the ones that were blank in terms of square footages. And it's hard to see, because the comma isn't there. But, I mean, if you look quickly, the square footages on the, the three schools alone, like dwarf everything else underneath it. They're, you know, most of our buildings are quite small. And obviously, your guys' buildings are really large and important. So, I don't know, I think that was something that the Finance Committee has brought up a few times, the Select Board. And I know, in speaking with our colleagues at the school, that I think we're all interested in, and it might be interesting to hear what people's thoughts are. Like, does that make sense? Do we want to try to go ahead with that? And maybe over the next month, we could try to refine a, a basic scope of work and get it out to a couple of firms, just to see what it might cost. I mean, I think it's very doable. I do think it would take, you know, a year plus to get everything back, and to sift through it, and to brainstorm about what are the priorities. But, I don't know, it just seems like there's a need, because we know there's not enough in the debt exclusion that we did a few years ago. We know there's other needs that the school have that probably wouldn't even classify as like huge repairs that need to get done. We have some on our side as well. And I should stress that none of these numbers include wastewater stuff, or we've had a separate group, which Matt, and Patrick, and Charlie have been a part of, working on that DPW fire station project for about two years now. So we're getting closer to be able to present something, maybe in three-plus months, I would guess. But, you know, we're making good progress on that end. But it's really, truly, what do we do about our existing buildings, and how do we make them better to last longer, and hopefully avoid some worse costs down the road?
I have a quick question. And, you know, with the evaluation of the, of the buildings in terms of efficiency, I, I wonder if the Cape Cod Collaborative would take a look at that for us?
So we've talked about that a little bit. I think the Cape Light Compact can probably provide us a grant, or provide us access to a third-party professional. But, and I talk, thinking about it, we thought we ought to plan that in a way that it can be phased with analysis of all the other issues, because one, one decision kind of leads to another, which I think, if Chris George were here, he would say, that's true, depending on how, how you choose to update or change any of the systems in, in the buildings that would impact the long-term efficiency decisions. So you could do a couple of things. You could do an alternate under the RFP to see what a private firm might offer. And then if it is reasonable, you could proceed. We could also look at working with the Cape Light Compact to do that for us, but try to do that in a way that's in alignment with the study.
Yes, thank you, thank you. And, and I'm sorry, grant hooked in, hooked in my ear, that, that would we attempt to access, to accumulate a grant?
Yeah, there are a couple of sources. I think the Cape Light Compact can provide you direct access to consultants at little or no cost to the town. I don't know the details, but that, that's one way. The other is possibly the Green Communities Act. But we're also looking at that to do some shorter-term energy efficiency projects.
Another good point. Thank you very much. Anybody else? Yes, Mr.?
Just as I look at the list of the, when we did the debt exclusion for the school, there's, as far as the efficiency things, there's six large projects that are being rebid or haven't been bid yet, which is the boilers, the AC upgrades, and the ventilation at Forest Hill and Oak Ridge primarily. Did you guys look into any efficiency programs on those, as far as overall, like, as far as the energy efficiency, efficiency programs with the boilers, or anything like that? Did Chris get into?
Boilers, yes.
The boilers, yeah, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have something, if it's all right. Just on the scope of work, to Bud's point, the Finance Committee has had discussions about this, and pretty much, I would say, we're in support of that, and would look towards it. But one of our discussion points, I would say, that the scope doesn't include, is taking a look at what maintenance needs, those projects that they identify would come about as a result of doing that work, and what projections they might provide to us regarding maintenance. Because we know maintenance has been a subject both for schools and town. So I would encourage that, in our scope of work, that we encourage the consultant company to include this projection on maintenance needs.
Interesting point. We could discuss that with them. Thank you. Anybody else?
I would just, we've talked about it, we had a Finance Subcommittee meeting earlier this evening. We fully support this concept. The Maine High School was built in 1976. It's 48 years old. The two new schools were built in 1989. They're 35. None of them are getting younger. So as part of this scope, not just the mechanical piece of HVAC, you know, and things like that, also, I'd like it to, and I imagine if these companies evaluate schools, they do this, also kind of look, include a piece of looking to the eye of what is a school, what do we want our schools to look like in 2035? The chemistry lab from 1976 does not necessarily meet the needs of today's students. So it needs to include that kind of piece. Education has changed in, you know, the last 40, 50 years. The technology the kids are using has obviously changed. So that needs to be part of the scope. And I'm not an expert in any of these companies, and, but I imagine that if this is what they do, it's what they do. So.
Thank you.
If we want to have, when this is done, we don't want to have, you know, a shiny old school. We want, we want to make sure the kids have the, you know, the best we can provide as far as modern facilities for them to learn in today's environment.
Received and understood. Anybody else?
And I think the last topic that we had listed on the cover sheet was just the special town meeting. So the, I mean, I think our personal goal is to literally not change a word on any of the articles. I know the Capital Planning Committee met after the warrant was published, when we were going to meet in November. So I would add what those recommendations were, but the goal would be to, you know, present the same exact eight articles as written the second week in January. And I just point out that there's the, you know, the first article is to get that additional money to the school from the additional Chapter 70 money that we received. Because that's coming from that source, it won't impact setting the tax rate, or anything that we might do before that. So it, it all works.
Indeed. Yes, Mrs., Dr. Miller?
It is, second.
Okay.
If it be helpful to our House of Representatives, if we could have a discussion here about the nation's competence to that one, so that we can do that.
So not all of the members are here this evening from the Finance So, not all of the members are here this evening from the Finance Committee that voted with reservation, although I was one of them, so I'll speak for myself.
Excuse me, could you state your name? No, please.
Oh, sure. Ed Coloppe, Chairman of the Finance Committee. Thank you, Charlie. So, my reservations really have to do with kind of the issue of transparency. Where are we at relative to monies that are being spent, have been authorized by town taxpayers, and how that money is being spent? And really across all aspects of the budget. I mean, tonight to see the update is, is great, but it would also be great to hear the plans around when those items are going to be completed. I think even in the capital plan, it's what's, what's to come. So, the reservation in my part wasn't around, you know, utilizing the money, but where is that money going to be utilized in the schools? In a commitment from school administration and the, and the school committee to say that those monies are going to be used for X and that there's a way to track that those monies were really used for that particular purpose. I think that one item is an example of maybe a, of a larger just need from, again, from my perspective. Does that help you?
Absolutely.
So, children's access to their schools, I guess I would ask that the casual debt more than happy to accept an invite to appear for any kind of, any data update. Both in August and September, absolutely, we gave a very detailed update on exactly the status of debt exclusion, but plus also that additional $1 million of FY '25 capital costs. We've also been very publicly stating that that $165,000 in additional Chapter 70 money was going to be reinvested into facility needs. Not any of that is going towards staff or anything for that fund. So, I think the transparency has been very much at this table during school meetings. And again, as I said before, I definitely would reiterate this numerous times in the past, we're willing to come to any kind of debate and share any of the data or any of the status products of both debt exclusion, but also the more short-term.
I think, if I recall correctly, during our meeting, we, one of our members made a comment, "It would have been great for someone from schools to have been at the meeting to explain a couple of warrant items that were school-related." So, perhaps it's, you know, on me as chair to see what our agenda's shaping up to and then extending that invitation to you. So, I'll, I'll be happy to do that in the future.
Right, and I think as Mr. Dunham said earlier, '25, we're in pretty good shape. '26, it's a little early in the process to try to hang our hat on a set of numbers. We'll get there.
Chairman?
Yes?
I just wanted to say, I think the works in progress on capital projects are so slow from bidding process to completion, or in this case, of an RFP just to get started. But I will say that I think it's refreshing in one sense for me, because this is probably the most transparent that we, it's ever been, is a V between Select Board, Town Manager's Office, and the schools on facilities. And it's probably the best it's ever been in terms of getting out there. What is that? You know, we're, leading up to the disposition of the Wing School, this was a mystery. And we're a lot closer to solving the mystery than we've ever been. And it's most important that everybody is really involved and happy to be here tonight because I'm sure we won't have the same happiness when we go to CHOP to get into a budget in the future, which is inevitable. Because the capital projects aren't all going to be able to be done. Some of them are going to be dreams that we hope we can do, but the more collaborative we have it between the boards, the better it's going to be, the better it projects for the people that we serve in terms of what our long-term responsibilities are for the capital needs and to Ed's point, the maintenance needs that are a day-to-day thing but result in higher capital costs down the road. So, but it's, it's refreshing, I think Bud deserves a lot of credit, as well as this guy here, you know, as Bill, in terms of taking a look at the whole. Really important. Thank you.
Absolutely. There's a lot of realistic optimism out there. And, and, and Bill, do you have anything to, Ed, not to put you on the spot, but do you?
Bill, do you want to add anything or touch on '26 at all or anything or?
Just as Bud, thank you. As Bud mentioned, you know, we are certainly, I've spent the last two months kind of compiling all the information we have up until this point, working with department heads on, you know, just getting a list of their needs that they're looking for for FY '26. I've worked with Michelle on, Michelle gave me an early estimate for, you know, what percentage the school might be looking to come in, come in with. But really, as Bud mentioned, it's really premature at this point in time to kind of go into specifics because so much of the budget right now is at estimate level. We really won't know concrete information for weeks, if not months. We have our first real kind of kickoff internal meeting going over the budget tomorrow afternoon. Myself, Bud, and Heather are going to be going over it. And as always, you know, just as Bud mentioned, you know, at every meeting, we'll have an updated budget for you. As you all know, that, you know, budget information can change during the cycle almost on a weekly basis. So, we'll make sure we keep that updated throughout the cycle and make sure it's transparent with it. And we should have something to present for you here in late January. So, happy to answer any questions, but, you know, right now, it's really just, it's almost just too, too premature to really give you a budget tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we'll work with the school on refining a scope of work, maybe talk to our project manager that's helped us both out in the past, just to find out who do, who does he think we should send it to and how much detail do we need to give? And we can start getting that ready to distribute, just to try to get some quotes.
Absolutely. Okay. We're going to close per se the, the tri-board meeting? Okay? Everybody's happy with that, but we're open to other comments? Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Select Board meetings, December 19th and holiday schedule.
Yes, when you're packing, I don't think it's changed much since the last few months, but I know we, is everyone good if we did a 3:00 meeting on the 19th? Does that work? And, okay. I think the big thing will be the tax classification workshop, which Ben assures me he's going to be briefer than the past, more exciting. And, and, I mean, I'm sure there's going to be other topics to bring up. You know, there's a couple of things outside of our control that the board's aware of with court cases and other things that if something came to fruition, we may have to take a few votes on that as well. But I think we're in pretty good shape and Melissa's organized stuff for our next meeting. And I know I should add the, the special town meeting for the 13th. I just need to put that there, yeah. Yep. I'll make sure that's added.
Bud, yeah, the town meeting, January 13th.
Yeah, I'll put that, I'll add that, yep. That was my mistake.
So, we've got that one covered?
Yep.
Went over the agenda a little bit and it'll be essentially the same.
So...
Essentially, it'll be the same.
So, I think we talked last time when you guys voted for the 13th.
Yeah.
I'll have the final warrant on the 19th and we'll sign it then, or the next day, whenever Shane's available to, and then we'll get it posted. Just, it's, it'll be up for a little bit longer than usual, but I think with the holidays, that makes sense and we'll just get that out there.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. And Shane, we'll get you on there. Other matters not reasonably anticipated by the Chair, I have none. Anybody else? Good. New business. Annual 2025 license renewals for approval, liquor, in holders, Class 1 and Class 2 auto dealers, livery, second-hand dealers and collectors.
Yeah, so Melissa does an incredible job overseeing all the licensing out of our office. It might take me a minute to find it, but I think you'd be surprised, like, with all the fees from all the licenses that she's, she oversees, you know, I think we bring in over $200,000 a year in all those expenses, which is a lot of work that she does. Heather and I see it every day when, you know, a, a potential new buyer or someone wants a certain time of license, she's right on top of it. So, for anyone to appear on this list, they have to be in compliance, they've paid all their right things, they've gotten the right forms. So, literally, there's not a single license holder in any of these categories that hasn't gotten us the right information, that they're all good to go. So, she did say if you vote the slate, she's getting the paperwork ready. It's a huge stack, so she said if people don't want to sign us that much, we have stamps if you'd prefer to do that, or if you want to come sign it, you don't have to do it tonight, we could do it anytime at the office. But we're well on schedule to get them to all the license holders by the end of the calendar year.
Okay, so, not to reiterate, but EMS in building and, and everyone's good with all of these facilities?
Yes, yep.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Shane?
Just two things. One is the, I know every year we go through, you know, the police go through and do their, you know, the test check up, the police.
Yep.
I just don't know who that has completed or not yet. And then the other thing was, I know this came up with Daniel Webster's been closed for, I know there's a fire, is there, I haven't heard anything, but I assume that I'm back that way.
Yeah, I've heard recently, just in the last week, that there's contractors working and they're trying to line people up to do some bigger things. I think they've realized that they want to do a, more of an overhaul than just fix it the way it was. And so, my understanding is it started to pick up. And I know they're well aware of, you know, what they need to do.
Yes, I think they're very anxious at this point.
Yeah.
To, to resolve all the issues and make their improvements and reopen at the restaurant portion.
All right, let's see. Make a motion, we approve the annual 2025 license renewals for approval, liquor, in holders, Class 1 and Class 2 auto dealers, livery, second-hand dealers and collectors as presented.
Motion by Mr. George, second by Mr. Hockter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four zero. Thank you.
Does everyone want their stamp used or you want to sign?
I'll be in tomorrow. I, I like to, if you pardon the expression, scribble on them, you know that.
Yep.
Seasonal population estimate for Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission.
Yeah, so annually, the state requires us to take a vote on our seasonal population. The strange part is it doesn't impact the licenses we have or how it works because all seasonal licenses are unlimited. So, every year, we do, you know, Melissa does sit down with the town clerk's office and goes through the census. It's important to point out that the way the ABCC counts it, it includes all the rooms that we have in town that are, you know, hotels, motels, bed and breakfasts, Airbnb. So, 37,000 was the best estimate that Taylor and Melissa came up with.
We double, basically.
That's really amazing, yes.
It's amazing. Summer.
Make a motion, we approve the seasonal population estimate for Alcohol Beverage Control Commission as presented. Second.
Motion by Mr. George, second by Mr. Hockter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Four zero?
Aye, sorry about that.
Approved, four zero. Historic District Commission, recommended alternate appointments.
I'd make a motion that we approve Chase Freeman of Five Holder Lane Sandwich Math.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hockter to approve Mr. Freeman, second by Mr. George. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four zero.
Do we need to, the other?
Yeah.
All right, do you want to make them?
Make a motion, we appoint the alternate, alternate member of the HTC, Michael Sullivan.
Do I hear a second?
So, do you need a motion or not?
Then you second it.
Guys, for the lack of a second.
Right, yeah.
Right. Okay. Okay, let's.
Okay.
All right. Everybody's comfortable with that protocol? Okay.
Yep.
Other matters not reasonably anticipated by the Chairman. I have none.
Really?
Anybody else for public comment?
And you waited all the way to the end.
Closing remarks. I, I shouldn't say just have, I, I have. Let us please continue to maintain those under attack in Eastern Europe, the conflict in the Middle East, and the overall threats to world peace in our thoughts and prayers. Anybody else?
I got one.
Yes?
Pat, is it caroling tomorrow night, Overland Square here?
I don't know.
I was talking to your brother, is it, is it tomorrow night?
But I don't know.
I think it was tomorrow night, I was just wondering. Do you know, anybody?
They're asking if the carol sing is tomorrow night?
Caroling down through the middle of town.
There's a caroling stroll.
Yeah, stroll thing. Tomorrow night, okay.
Like it always was.
Like it always is.
Right in front of First Church.
All right, so everybody else in the public knows tomorrow night?
There's also a stroll on Sunday afternoon where there will be caroling. And that will be a really nice event for people to attend. I hope my mic's on. So, that will be a really good event, Sunday afternoon.
Okay. And then there's Coco with a, a police officer at Heritage tomorrow night at 4:30, from 4:30 to 7:30, I, I, I believe. at 4:30. From 4:30 to 7:30, I, I, I believe. Of course, endorsed by Community Services with the Police Department, and the, and the sandwich cynical citizens, police alumni will be involved as well. So...
Okay.
Those are the announcements, I guess. Motion to adjourn?
Okay, our next meeting is 12/19/24.
Second.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Motion by, by Mr. George, second by Mr. Hockter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four zero. As he stated, the, our next meeting is Thursday, 12/19 at 3:00 p.m. here in Town Hall. Thanks to everyone. Have a good evening.